There was a big conference in CSAC, got this board of directors meeting going on the same time. So I don't know if you heard that. Went and saw it. It was Capitol. He gave me a tour of the thing that we never give at the Assembly of the Sheriff's Office. Sir, you get a chance to get down there.
I haven't gone on that much.
That's over the second time.
Why do you laugh when I ask you that?
What do we have, Blake? We need a plane.
You have thirty seconds. Yeah. I want to call you.
Ten, nine.
I'm gonna call you Rolex from now on.
Five, four, three, two, one. There you go. Okay. Any questions? We're gonna be harder. I want to hear your comments. Other comment? Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, we go to the next items to be discussed in this session.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the Board will meet in closed session for a conference with legal counsel significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision D two of Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine and for a conference with labor negotiator Rick Hague, which may include the Paul and Bargaining Units, Lassen County Peace Officers Association, Lassen County Police Officers Supervisors Association, Lassen County Peace Officers Management Association, and Lassen County Deputy Sheriff's Association. The Board will also convene for a conference with labor negotiator Rick Hague convening as a Lassen County In Home Supportive Services Public Authority before discussion regarding California United Home Care Workers Local Order Zero Three Four. Then the Board will also for a claims report.
Okay. And that will leave for the next session.
I like wrapping things up. I asked my money for you.
You should be quick when you change and force the climate change.
No, and I think climate pattern is actually.
I think it's actually the airhouse had a better pattern.
Yeah, I'm happy. A couple of me. We have three women and two. Well, yeah. It doesn't help.
Okay. We came back to work. Any questions?
Very good. Good. Salute.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and a true republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, God, as today through our meeting that we make profound judgment in all issues before our granted course act and no doubt comes, so no one will step forward to decision. Amen. Now, I think the items to be discussed in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, the Board met in closed session for a conference with legal counsel significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision D two of Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. One case, there was no reportable action. They also met for a conference with labor negotiator Rick Hague, including the Paul and Bargaining Units, Lassen County Peace Officers Association, Lassen County Peace Officers Supervisors Association, Lassen County Peace Officers Management Association, and Lassen County Deputy Sheriff's Association. There was no reportable action. The Board also met for a conference with labor negotiator Rick Hague convening as the Lassen County In Home Supportive Services Public Authority before discussion with Rick Hague regarding California United Home Care Workers Local Order Zero Three Four on labor negotiations. The Board then reconvened as the Board of Supervisors and received a report on claims and there was no reportable action in any of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Hague. Okay, we'll move on to agenda three, no additions and regulations. Got any changes?
Could we ask that we adjourn meeting only in memory of Perry, could we just want to adjourn since Sunday?
Okay. Okay. Would you have a motion through the agenda?
Go ahead.
Second. Any discussion? You want to say aye?
Aye.
Of course, you know, I'd love it. Public comment. Cut off with Kevin Jones.
Could you take us out of order, Mr. Chairman?
If you could, John, if you would like.
Thank you.
I've got three, everybody shuffle them up. Go ahead, John.
Next card, eighty card.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Mino, I'm here today off duty as a member of the Peace Officers Association Management Unit. Our unit has declared impasse with the county in an effort to try and develop a successor MOU for wages, hours, and working conditions for our group. Talks broke down, is the short answer, gentlemen, and frankly, it feels like talks were broken from the very beginning. At the end of the day, the only way to get a message to the Board is directly. We've done this through the third-party intermediary, we've tried to work with Mr. Hague, and I worked with Hague for a long time. I started bargaining things in this county in nineteen ninety-four, and I think that was the last time anyone stood at this podium because of a bargaining outcome or a bargaining stall. And the process was broken in and it feels like we have just stalled out. So the only way that we can convey to the Board the issues that are facing us is if we do it right here direct at this point. That is one of the purposes of impasse, so we can bring it right here. And as we move through these things, as we stand here today, this Board doesn't have the benefit of knowing exactly what we've said or how we've said it with the tone and inflection and emphasis added where it needs to be and on our side. We don't have any benefit of knowing exactly what the Board's responses have been with the appropriate tone and inflection and emphasis as well. And that's part of the process, that's part of dealing with third parties, but we've hit a point where we think it's important to bring it to the Board. Bargaining is very challenging, it can be very adversarial. At the end of the day, though, it impacts our operation and it can have impacts on the public. Our turnover has just gotten to the point where it is bleeding us dry. We can't get good people, we can't keep good people, and that combination is hurting us. And the people that are here work their tails off for the citizens of our county to try and make sure that citizens never feel the impacts as our experience continues to diminish. And we've hit a point where we think it's important to get that message. I like Rick Hague, I've dealt with him for a lot of years, but I'm very frustrated with him. I don't appreciate what feels like a pretty hard line in the sand. He has been, I mean, it's just, and that may be the direction, but at the end of the day, we work with this Board all the time, and this Board has been very supportive of public safety. I get asked in the public all the time, does that Board give you guys the support you need? And it's a resounding yes. Operationally, whether we've come in and said we need bodies, we need programs, we need a new healthcare program, we need new control boards, operationally, this Board has been supportive. This Board, we sat in a budget we knew not very long ago and got to hear Mr. Chapman talk about the importance of public safety, so I know it's important to you. I just don't know where the disconnect is. I don't know where the breakdown in communication is, because I don't think this Board is obtuse when it comes to matters of public safety and taking care of our citizens. But this has hit a point where we feel like we need to communicate straight with the Board, we need to be able to have a chance to have our message heard and get a chance, I know that it's hamstrung a little bit because we can't get the feedback at public comment, but we at least need to make sure that we can get the message to you so you know our issues and you know what we're up against. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Kevin Jones, I come to you today not only as an employee of Lassen County, but a member of the management unit, captain of the sheriff's office, and a person who, I'm kind of unique. I left the city years ago to come to the county, and that's not real common, but I came here for a reason. Matter of fact, I came over to work for Mr. Burns, and I enjoyed that, and I eventually came to the sheriff's office. And I love my job, I love what I do, and I don't think that there's a person that sits on this Board that thinks that everyone in this county shouldn't be paid more. I've heard it been said before, I know there's been comments about, you know, we need that, you know, I think that if the Board had twenty percent to give everyone, everyone would get it, because I think that this Board does care about their personnel. I know the Board cares about their public safety. John did a real good job, so I'm not gonna go over a lot of things, but this is not personal, this is not, you know, when we talk about impasse, this isn't a line in the sand, this isn't personal. I know every single person going from left to right, for a long time, some more than others. And I don't think that the Board's trying to draw a line in the sand, but I participated like John in bargaining since nineteen ninety-three. I went to our first bargaining session and I didn't go back, and it was just, it was a slap, unfortunately. You know, bargaining's supposed to be a back-and-forth relationship, and I agree with John, he says I think this is probably the most frustrating I've ever participated in. And you hear these comments outside of the meetings or outside, you know, whatever unit specifically ours is drew a line in the sand, this is what we want. Well, that's not true. We're unique. That doesn't make a person at the sheriff's office any better than someone at the road department, someone at the assessor, you know? That doesn't make us better, but we are unique. We're twenty-four seven, we're three sixty-five, you know, we miss anniversaries, we miss Christmas days. Does that mean, you can't put a dollar around on that, we miss Christmas days here, so we're gonna give you ten percent. But we are unique. And I think the Board recognizes that, and the point here today is not to come in and say, you know, give us more, give us more. Recognize the uniqueness. I've seen, I've been in board meetings where employees have gotten substantial increases, and I've heard the board members talk about that person and say, this person is so vital to our operation, and I know they are. Every person that's been reclassed or whatever. But for that person, and I know they're great employees, we have people to match that. They're great employees too. So, you know, does that mean that they should be getting increased? Well, we see that, and, you know, obviously, Mr. Burns and Mr. Egan, the Board made a commitment that they are going to go forward. We need stability in the administration. And they did that, and they did a great job. The Board recognized that, there were some substantial increases, that's great. There's a lot of employees like Bob and Richard and everyone else, we have them, and again, this is not adversarial. Intent is not come in here and throw something in your face. It's just to ask, to acknowledge the uniqueness of a public safety agency. Thank you.
John McGarva.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is John McGarva. I'm a sergeant with the Lassen County Sheriff's Office, off duty today to come speak with you, and I'm also the president of the POA Supervisors Association. I come from this as a unique perspective as well, because there's a part of me that never thought I would be standing here and having this conversation. We have went to impasse. I'm a third-generation county employee. My grandfather, Jack McGarva, was the Ravendale Road Foreman. You guys all know my father, Bob McGarva. I remember talking, listening to them growing up, talking about negotiations and things that have happened, and I remember thinking, I want to be a county employee. I came to Lassen County, I wanted, I live in Lassen County, and I served the community of Lassen County with pride. I never thought that I would be having this conversation, because I've never had that adversarial relationship with any of you, and I don't intend for that to be the case here. To not repeat anything that, or parrot anything that John Minogue or Kevin Jones said, I agree. Every meeting, the meeting I've had has felt more like a slap to me and my intelligence as a person than it has a back-and-forth relationship. And I felt at this point, as well as my members, that we needed to start discussing things directly with you gentlemen. So that is why we're here. And we are, I agree, we can't keep good people. We lost a sergeant in the last year to a better opportunity within the county itself. We're having trouble competing, even at a supervisory level. That's a tough decision for anybody to go from being a supervisor to not anymore in another position because it's a better opportunity. So what we're looking at is, is just to be able to give you guys, get a chance to speak with you guys and get our message across as well. I thank you guys for the time.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to say thanks to three of you for coming in, any comments, I know the entire Board, we really appreciate that. Any more public comment, I see agenda, I didn't see.
I'm good, I'll have to leave a form, sorry. This Board hired Bob Burns on May sixteenth, two thousand fourteen with a gross salary of hundred and twenty-nine dollars eight hundred and ninety, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars based on seventy percent of a judge's salary. This wasn't the governor's salary, it certainly wasn't the president's salary, it was a judge's salary. Find that odd, and I'll go into that later on an agenda item. From July first to June, July first, two thousand fourteen to June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, Burns' gross salary was a hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, according to public record, which I've handed you. Who has the authority with a contract in place, terms in place, to raise his salary? This Board is going in the wrong direction about taking care of your salaries. If the judge's salaries are increased at two percent on July first every year, Burns should have been, should have been making during that fiscal year a hundred and thirty-two thousand, yet his paycheck was a hundred and forty-four thousand. I have a contract here, if anybody would like, I didn't make a lot, but you can certainly have the one I brought, I gave you as pay stuff, and I said this is becoming an elite Board where we pay a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's not the thirty-eight thousand dollars Mr. Burns received in benefits, so you're getting up in a hundred and seventy thousand dollar group. So I'm a little concerned, I think the public is starting to get a little concerned that you don't take care of the people that actually do the work, but you certainly want to take care of yourself.
Anybody else wish to speak of public comment? Eight and nine, we'll move on to the next items for the board members. Yes? Karen.
Two guys have two things, I have to give the personal list. Anyway, I know that this next Friday night, Victor always could be going to hurt also. Tom, I think the winner of the game should be the box of dollars to the next quarter.
I'll agree to that. Might as well put your order in now. Oh, no, I guess that's all I have. Sorry.
Just a couple things, Mr. Chairman, just one report. Last week I had the two things, the Calafco Conference, and some very interesting, I think, development. One of the big things that he kind of focused on was the role that LAFCO has or should play when it comes to all this groundwater management stuff that's emerging out of the state. We had Chris John Benoit was there, I mean, he kind of, he's our executive officer for LAFCO, he's also an executive officer, maybe four or five other counties, the small counties, he has a network, and so we had a chance to kind of network with some of those other counties, but there, I mean, we have going on in Big Valley, and I think that coming to meeting that will take place there and dealing with the Lassen, Mora flood control district, whether that would be an appropriate vehicle or not. So it was really quite enlightening and enlightening. I would hope that when we do have that meeting, wherever it takes place, then we try to get maybe Mr. Benoit to be there, because I think the state is looking at, you know, LAFCO, there's a piece for them to kind of fit into, and question whether you form a district to actually do it, or you use an existing vehicle like Lassen, Mora flood control would be part of that discussion. Also, attended the CSAC Board of Directors meeting, that was on Thursday, one at the same time, so fortunately the LAFCO meeting was kind of, you know, low when the CSAC meeting took place, but the big thing that I think came out of that meeting, we had actually two things. The tribal lands transferring, you know, public lands from fee to the rancherias and so forth, has been a big issue that's been around the country, particularly here in California. Diane Dillon, which you have served with, with the RCRC, of course, you've been very involved there for the last ten years, has been kind of one of the point people for California for the suits to deal with the issue back in Washington, I guess you made three trips there already this year. And anyway, the CSAC lobbyist from Washington came out, the guy that's handling kind of the negotiations, and he was kind of making the case to the CSAC Board and the CSAC that we not be overly insisting or demanding in terms of terms and conditions when that process is going through. Apparently, the nineteen thirty-four Act that kind of governs the whole process has kind of been broken, and has been broken for a long time, and there's a senator from Wyoming that has got a bill, he's the chair of the committee, he's got a bill put together, and one of the things that they were really proud of is the fact that California counties now have a seat at the table, but yet when being there at the table giving input, and Diane came in and kind of really ripped this bill apart, she had like five pages of, you know, critique in terms of where there are deficiencies, and she said at the RCRC meeting that RC had voted unanimously to support these changes being proposed to that bill if we're going to have any support from the counties. Well, we wound up having a vote of the Board of Directors and going forward to counties present either in person or on the phone, but it was twenty-two to eighteen to only provide support to basically back the RCRC-supported action. The big urban counties were not very happy at the fact that, and this lobbyist for CSAC wasn't very happy, that he had to go back to Washington and kind of say, well, California counties will only be on board if we can bring about these other changes. So it was kind of a big, it was kind of a big fight that took place. Glad I was here, I actually voted with Diane, I was very impressed with her arguments on it, so it's consistent with your vote would have been at RCRC. The other issue we had, Transportation Commission had one of their members there talking about the governor's proposal, and Chris Edelman Dolly has, you know, the Republican Caucus has taken a very strong position. Of course, they need some votes out, the Republicans, to be able to pass some of this proposed package that Brown and the Democrats want to put through, but they're really looking at their, I guess, gas tax revenues have really been plunging, and that's got them all concerning, of course, this guy from Transportation Commission, he said back in like nineteen ten when they started the gas tax, you know, every car was the same, and they all got like ten miles to the gallon or whatever, so the tax was pretty even, but now you have cars that get fifty, sixty miles to the gallon and others that don't, and it's a very uneven tax, so what they're wanting to do is kind of move away from having, you know, gas taxes being the source and actually putting like a per-vehicle fee, it'd be kind of like a flat fee, like sixty-five bucks is the number they reduce, so if you have a car and you're gonna pay sixty-five dollars, and then they're gonna keep track of the mileage you drive, and based on your mileage and where you drive, they will add on like additional fees, and this is something that they're kind of evolving towards. And the other thing that was really startling, and I'm thinking it's kind of time to be tired because it's starting to be too complicated, but is that by twenty twenty-five, which is nine years from now, seventy-five percent of the cars that are going to be on the market are all going to be these new cars that have all the sensors and all the GPS and stuff like that, you don't even have to have drivers, you get in it and they don't collide with each other, they know where the other cars are at. He said that it's gonna be all safer than people driving now because the technology has a quicker response time, it'll slow down, it'll avoid the kind of collisions. I asked him if they have tested it out with the deer and the animals and the bears and stuff in the mountains yet, but he said that they have been working on that too. But anyway, it sounds like technology and transportation, you know, over the next ten years that we're gonna be evolving into the age of George Jetson or something, and it's kind of like totally amazing. But yeah, that was the other big presentation that we have. It's all about taxing, how to raise the money, and the current model, they'll be giving them the money they want, so they're gonna be scrapping it, I think, as their long-term plan, and they're gonna be moving into something that's gonna be user-based. I know now when you renew your insurance for auto insurance, your insurance people want to know what your mileage is, they keep track of it, and they base their insurance rates based on mileage, and they're doing that manually, but if they start using the technology for sensors for cars, they know how fast you drive, they know where you drive, they know how many miles you drive, just a matter of collecting that data and sending you the bill, but that's, and raise your insurance rates along the way, but in your gas, that's how they will replace the gas after that. So that was the big thing that we learned in Sacramento last week, and I'm glad to get out of that.
The one thing I forgot was that meeting I went to, open Al Terrace, it was on the twenty set up by the Water Advisory Board up there in Mora, and they had DWR there that was talking about the groundwater basin. Their Big Valley DWR was there, and we asked a lot of questions and really got, we got some answers from them, but they weren't very good answers, you know, because, you know, we found out, you know, on their little graph on the fracture, you know, the irrigated acres, they discount irrigated acres, they're not separating the pump water from the flood water or from the surface water. You know, and some of their information that they used, some of it is synthesized, some of it is statistically, and some of it is just based on a curve. And it's just, it's all over the board and.
Estimates.
Yeah.
Some of them aren't using true figures, some of them are.
Right, and some of it's just a curve, and so anyway, there's a, there's a lot of holes, there's a lot of flaws, and, you know, I think there's, I don't know, personally, I think we can maybe stick to our guns on this one, possibly, but we'll have to wait and see what Mora County wants to do on some of the stuff. Anyway, it's, the time crunch is there, but how much will be there is to, if we have to stick to it, I don't know, because it's, we're still at like twenty seventeen, and they're thinking there might be like a six-month window in there to get everything changed, which is not a very long time for a development.
It's never possible.
Yeah, so, anyway, it was a, it was a good meeting, it was very educational, but it was very disappointing, very alarming, very scary. You know, see, because they just, it's like Jim was just talking about, they just want total control of people. If they got control of the water, they got total people, they got this information to tell you how fast you're driving and where you're going, and it's just.
The money will fall on us, the expense will fall on us, that's for sure.
It is scary.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to information consent calendar. Any of these items, anybody wish to take off?
Sounds like that mine was G P taken off.
Two?
Yeah.
Two? Take it off. Eight and nine, we have a quick period of consent calendar. Do you have any other considerations?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, interrogating discussion. Want to say aye?
Aye.
Go to the nonchalant, we'll go to G two.
Just got a quick question, Mr. Chairman, and that is on the resolution, I have a problem with the board, the issue that's been identified here, and I was just kind of curious why the deputy C O is left off. I would think that that would be one that would be worth having on there as well. You have your county administrative officer, you have assistant to the county administrative officer, which is June, and then you have your emergency service director and assistant O S chief. I think it'd be good if you have, you know, the deputy C O designated as well, to have that in the session now.
I concur, yeah.
Just something I just kind of jumped at, I saw this morning.
Okay. You can add that in.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
My theory is that there's a lot of tests.
Yeah, numbers, I can do that, that's not a problem.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I agree that we adopt I M G two and approve the resolution from the.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Want to say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we go to, include the elections.
Good morning, sorry, members of the Board. Crystal Henderson, Lassen County In Home Supportive Services Office, Elections Division. I'm here this morning to present a resolution passed by the Secretary of State recognizing the weeks of September fourteenth to the twenty-fifth as California High School Voter Education Weeks. The purpose of this resolution is to encourage student voter registration. Voter registration and participation among youth is at a historical low. In the November election, September fourteenth in Lassen County, the turnout among eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds was twenty-two percent. Nine hundred and nine are registered to vote and only two hundred and five actually voted. So during the designated weeks, I'll be going to Lassen.